All right, call meeting order, roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Grineal.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Hey, item two, consideration discussion regarding fiscal year 2022, 21, 22, excuse me, town budget, Joe Duffy or Mrs. Town Manager, whatever.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, Mayor and councils, today we're here for our annual budget retreat. We'll start off today with Joe Duffy, our finance director, giving us a lot of information on the economics and fiscal condition of our town. An opportunity for you to get all the information and ask questions of him. Then I'll finish up with some ideas for you to start your discussions, and then we'll turn it over to all of you to discuss your priorities and your upcoming goals and provide us some direction for the budget. After that, we'll take all that and work the budgets, and today is just very preliminary information for you. And we'll have follow-up meetings for the budget. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thanks, Cindy, Mayor and Council. I have a few slides I'd like to go with. I have a few slides. A few, just a few. Ten?
Holy moly.
I'm sorry, it's budget time, Mr. Mayor. There's not much I can do about it. So, here's what's in these numbers and here's what's not. Basically, we took a snapshot of where the town was about a week ago. I've projected all the revenues through the end of June 30 and into next year. We do not have the state shared revenue estimates yet, which come basically in the middle of this month. Sometime we'll receive that from them. And we do not have the department's requests. So we have, basically, I assume the department, we budgeted so much at the beginning, for this budget year, I assume we budgeted about the same for next budget year. So we have none of their equipment requests, none of their personnel requests. We haven't gone through that process. They're putting that data together. So I'm going to focus mostly on how much we have and what we're projecting in revenues. But know that this is just a snapshot of today, and it's going to change as we get more and more through the budget process. So one of the things is, overall, our revenues have been really strong. Now, this time last year, I stood up before you and said, hey, we're not sure what revenues are going to be at all. I mean, we basically cut everything back and just said, whoa, let's put up, let's just stop. And that's what we did. We reduced the state shared revenue estimates. After they sent out their estimates and a week later say, hey, everything we said last week, we're not quite sure whether we're going to meet it. Fortunately, those, all those state shared revenues have been stronger than they even originally projected. Our sales tax revenues were up a little over 20% year-to-date, which is about a million plus for the town in Chino Valley. So we're doing better now than we were last year with just our retail sales within the community. Now, that's driven by people staying home, shopping local, all that kind of thing. So that's been a positive. We've also seen a lot of increased activity internet sales. So all the Amazon, all the Walmart, everything you get delivered, guess what? That's helping our coffers quite a bit. And that's going up a little bit every month. So we see a little bit more. We're seeing strong home construction activity, just like this entire area. We're seeing a lot of construction sales tax. And construction sales tax isn't, it's one of our larger revenues, but it's not the largest. So we're, and we're seeing that, and that's also adding new water and sewer accounts. So it's hap, it's happening, it's helping us throughout the whole town. We also can look out with Josh and see that we've got some apartments coming. We've got some new subdivisions in the, in the hopper. We have some new retail coming. So all in all, where we are today, we're probably in the best financial condition that the town's ever been, and we're still seeing the growth. We're still seeing it being positive. So, one of the things that Cindy has been really emphasizing since she's got here, and I really like the way that she's had me, we've put these charts together just to show the difference between our ongoing revenues and our one-time revenues. And one of the concerns I know we've had is we don't want to spend these one-time revenues on ongoing expenses. We don't want to pay salaries with these one-time little bumps. We want to just use our ongoing revenues for those. Then the flip side, we want to use these one-time expenses to maybe do some capital improvements. So we're trying to visually break that out for you. And, and we've put this graph together. So this is the general fund, and I'm going to walk you through this in, in detail. And then the next, the other four funds are HERF, Water and Sewer, Capital Improvement. Those funds, I'll just briefly hit the highlights of those, what we're looking at. So 20, if you go to the left side there, 2021, we have, the first thing is the orange bar, this is our ongoing revenues that we have every year. Okay, this is our state sales tax, our state shared revenues, our building, well, not building permits, but, you know, just the stuff, recreation fees, things that we get year after year, they're pretty consistent, pretty easy to estimate. We have our one-time revenues, which is this green bar, and that is primarily construction sales tax and building permits, but it's only about half of them, because even if the economy went into the toilet, we're still going to collect some. So we took about 50% off those. As you can see, it's not, if that was double, it's not a really big portion of our revenues. So in the general fund, our revenues are pretty stable year after year. The gold here, or the yellow, is our fund balance less our reserve. So this is how much we have in the bank from here to here, and this is what we're required to have. So essentially, we have this much money to spend on one-time capital projects, things like that. We don't want to go into the red, because that's five percent, that's 25% of our annual expenditures. And by town, our policy is not to spend that. Now, sometimes you might end up in there, but you need to get back down. So the expenses, the blue line is our ongoing expenses. So with ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses, these are salaries, electric utilities, just the things we spend year after year after year to provide the services we do. You want to make sure that ongoing revenues is a little bit higher than your ongoing expenses, for sure, or else you're going to be eating into this. And then we have our one-time expenditures. And right now, we have very few one-time expenditures, because we haven't sat down with the departments and got all their requests for next year. So I imagine that this line, the gray bar here for next budget year is going to pop up here into the reserves a little bit. And that's what part of today's meeting with you guys is, are there one-time things that you guys want to see? Knowing that departments haven't requested vehicles, they haven't requested equipment, I mean, you know, so that's what we have to balance. And to basically have a structured, balanced budget, you want to make sure that you're not going, you know, ideally, you stay right about there. But with these healthy reserves, we could actually dip in here and spend some of this money this next year. And then, of course, we project for a few years out also, as we do it. So when the departments give us projects, there's some we just can't do next year. We just won't be able to afford it. But we'll pop them over here in this year, so you can see that, hey, we're anticipating hitting that fund balance. So does that make sense for you guys? Do you, do you see what we're trying to do here? Trying to graphically show that, you know, we're, you know, the town is operating very sensibly, very stably, but we do know we have some extra money we can spend this year to get some, some of your projects in priority step. So the HERF fund, this one, this is our current year ongoing ongoing expenditures with our ongoing revenue. This is the CARES Act funding. So we have the one-time expense, Road 2 North, and slash or all the crack sitting and stuff we're doing, whichever way you want to look at it. But this, the green really shows the one-time bump in revenues. And the HERF fund, we pretty much stay right about even, year after year after year. We always have. And this is, of course, our required fund balance. This is the capital improvement fund. This is 1% of our town sales tax that we move over to the capital improvement fund. And it's supposed to be used things for debt service, supporting the police, recreational facilities, and one-time capital things. And we run some of our bigger capital projects through this fund also. So we get our YAVI drainage money, anytime we get, you know, extra funds, wherever we use it. Why is it so high next year? Well, this is the funding for the police department. I put $5.5 million loan funds in here, and this is pretty much the police department right here, a $6 million expenditure. But there's other things. We also do work it out, Old Home Manor, all economic development stuff. So there's quite a few other one-time things here. Same with the general fund, you don't want to get into the red. You want to make sure you have a healthy fund balance and, you know, healthy reserve, less your fund balance. This is the water fund. Now, this, this shows you, the water fund's a small fund. It's about a million dollars a year. We're spending more this year than our ongoing revenues and our fund balance, and that's because of the building. And we, we dipped into our reserves. In fact, we dipped over our reserves to get the building. So this next year, it'll start catching up, and by the 2030, 24th and 25th, we know what it will do. And basically, we split the cost of that building, the 600 and some thousand dollars in half, half water, half sewer. So the town basically has just made an investment, and the fund will get back to profitability. It's actually cash flow positive, so it's, it'll be fine. But it's, it's a small fund, and we let it, we intentionally knew it was going to go negative. So, and if you, some of the older councilmembers might remember that it wasn't too many years ago that the general fund was putting money into the water fund every year. So, and they, and they paid it all back. And then the sewer fund, same thing, this is the building costs coming in here. These are ongoing, our one-time revenues, the green, that's using the WIFSA Reserve Repair and Replacement Fund. So I'm recording it as revenue to show you graphically how it is. We have a little over a million dollars, and now that things are starting to break, the grit screw and stuff like that, we're using, if it's to replace an existing piece of equipment, where we can use the WIFSA Reserve and Repair and Replacement Fund. If it's an expansion or new, well, then we have to use system, new system dollars for that. So, and that's actually, that plant's a little lower, 14, 12 to 14 years old. We've been building that. It's getting near, you know, getting to that 20-year timeframe. So this is actually exactly what that repair and replacement fund was set up for, to have the extra money just to make, you know, replace the grit screw and all that kind of stuff. So it's actually going to work out pretty well for us. As you can see, we're remaining our reserve, and we have a healthy little balance above what we're required to have there. So some good news, is last year, we got 1.4 million from the CARES Act funding, and basically paid for our police department, all their labor that time, freed up some money in the general fund. So we said, hey, let's go do some roadwork, and that's what we've done. Well, it looks like in this last stimulus, we're going to get a couple more payments, about 2.9 million, almost $3 million. We might get one before now, and June 30, to tell you the truth, we do not have any guidance on what it's going to be, what we can use the money for, how it's going to be expensed. But if it's similar to what we did before, I just have a strong feeling it's going to be very, very similar to it. They're going to make it in two equal payments to us. So we have about $3 million that, Mayor and Council, you need to decide, you know, where that goes. And we'll give you more detail, but it's something that we should talk about, whether we use it all on roads, whether we use it as a down payment on the police department. I'm assuming it's going to free up general fund money. So you'll have a little, a nice little nest egg here over the next two years. So how did we get in such, our financial condition has improved significantly. And so let me try to explain how that happened. Last year, at this time, we were assuming, so this is March, so we're assuming in June of 2020, that our fund balance, we were going to end with these amounts in each of the funds. So we thought we were only get, we're going to end up with $6 million in the general fund. Well, with the CARES Act funding and the additional sales tax and cutting expenses drastically, we ended up with $7.8 million, or about a million eight more. So we started the year, this budget year, our current budget year, with 1.8 million more than we thought. So take the CARES Act off, it's about 500,000 or four or 500,000. Same thing in the capital improvement fund, HERF fund, water, and the sewers fund, while they spend like crazy. So they're, they're bad, bad boys. So we budgeted the end this year, based on the way we budgeted, essentially the same thing. So this is the future June 30. We're projecting that we're only going to have 5.5 million in the bank. Well, you know, we had a, the prior side, we had about a million, five or so left. But this is where I'm estimating we're going to be this year. Again, we've cut expenses and our revenues have just been really strong, both the CARES Act funding and the sales tax funding. So we're ending up with about $4 million more than we thought we were going to have, which is great. I'm very happy to be able to say this and say something, we're $4 million short. Capital improvement fund, you got about a half million. HERF fund, you got another, you know, 160, and water and sewer funds. So all of our funds, their financial position has improved more than we had projected they were going to be at this time. So we've, the town's doing really, the financial position of town is getting better and better. So, which is great for Mayor and Council, because now we can get some projects done, spend some, you know, however you guys want to do it. So, and it's reflected in our cash balance. Our cash balance has just been heading straight up, too. So. So with that, I just wanted to do a real quick recap of our, our major revenues. And this is town sales tax. This is just the retail portion, not construction and bed tax. So as you can see, we, in 20, we're at 2.3, almost 2.4. This year, we're going to be at 2.9. Vehicle license, one of our state shared revenues, the orange is this year, state shared sales tax, income tax, they're all doing great. HERF, we had a one-time payment in here of about $160,000. So HERF's probably flat this year, a little bit up. Water service fees, new accounts, capital improvement, which is the same, the 1%, because these are about equal here, you know, 800,000, extra 175,000. And this is just our growth in those, the projected growth from the prior year. And these are actual to projected. And then the sewer service fees, we're seeing the new accounts. So all of our major revenues, and this makes up 60% of our total revenues, are, have been very strong, continue to show the strength. And so, I just, this is just the actual numbers that drove those charts. And you can see that, you know, sales tax percent over budget, we're about 20% higher. We're, we're tracking a being about a 21% up year-to-date on it, and that's holding pretty consistently. Capital improvements, about 25%. So all of our major revenues, except for the HERF revenues, which had that one-time payment last prior fiscal year, are up. So all, all in all, we're up about 18%. And all of our revenues are up 22%. So those are things like permit fees, building permits, all those other little miscellaneous revenues that are adding up. So, again, we're just doing much better. And our major revenues are, you know, 64% of what our total collected. So those prior rate revenues make up 64% of all the revenues the town collects in the, in the year. So, bottom line, the town, financially, we're healthy. We're seeing stable growth. And so we have the ability to do, do some projects, and that's really what we're asked. And you guys, pick your projects. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cindy.
Thank you, Joe. And I just want to recognize Joe's efforts. He's put a lot of work over the past few weeks to get all this together for you. So, thank you for doing that, Joe.
Thank you.
So I do want to reemphasize, like he spoke to you about that, it's very important that we have a structurally balanced budget that we only fund ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues. So you want to make sure that your employee compensation costs, that your benefit costs, your staffing needs, and then any new programs that we're not already, we don't already have, or that are existing programs that we want to keep, are funded through revenues that we expect to come in year after year. So just like at home, you wouldn't want to base paying your mortgage on your tax refund, as you're just going to get that once a year. You go buy a new car with your tax refund, but you don't fund your mortgage with it. Well, depending, cheap car, whatever you need. But, and so that is something that, you know, staff has already been doing, but that's something that we will continue to emphasize, so that the town has a structurally balanced budget and is in good fiscal condition. So also, so there's a lot of one-time dollars that Joe spoke about. We have a very large fund balance that we're building, which is great. But you have to balance that with the needs of the community as well. You don't want to just keep taking money, taking money, taking money, and not putting it to good use. So we'll look to you for guidance on how we should be spending that money as well. So when we talk about one-time, again, things, if you think about it in your home budget, if you're, you know, you've got an inheritance, or you've got your tax refund, or those things, you buy yourself something new. So just like on the town side, if you need infrastructure enhancements, if you have, you know, a new project that you want to get completed, that will just take a year or so. If you need to buy vehicle, if there's equipment needs, those are the kind of things that you want to fund with your one-time dollars. So with that, there are some things that staff believes are in the pipeline that we'd like for you to consider in your discussion, discussions today. So some things that have been identified as needs, our general plan is going to need an update. We have some master plans that I believe we should put in place on our water and our sewer side. Also, formalizing our capital improvement plan, and I was very pleased to see that Joe and Frank had already really, and other staff had already been working on putting capital improvement plans together. However, we didn't have a formalized document put together yet. And so we're going to work very hard to get that put into, on your budget document, along with a vehicle replacement fund. So you have been replacing your vehicles on a one-time basis as they kind of come up. However, that needs to be more formalized. And again, very happy to see that staff had already been working on that and getting worksheets together. So we're just going to formalize that into our budget document as well. And both of those will need funding to get them kicked off and funded. We may not be able to fund it all the way, but it's important that we get started on that and have a plan in place to get it funded over the next few years. Old Home Manor is out there as well as a project. You're going to hear a lot about that tonight in your, your work session, but it's a big project out there that you'll need to discuss today, where you'd like staff to continue with that. There's other events that go on in the city, recreation events, perhaps you're going on to think about. I know the 50-year celebration was something that had to be postponed. So perhaps a discussion on if that's something you want us to move forward with. Also, 4th of July, things like that, just ideas for you to consider. And then we will also be bringing department requests to you. The departments will be submitting, there's a lot of staffing needs out there. Whatever programmatic needs, they think they need, just things to help them be able to maintain or enhance the service levels that we're giving to our town now. And we're not exactly sure where that will all come out yet, but departments are working on those. I believe they're due this week and next. So we'll be putting all that together. We're not going to be able to fund everything that everyone wants, but we're going to come up with a good recommended, recommended budget for you. And also, just to help you with your discussion today, I pulled these out, some focus area that have been in your strategic plan over the years. And these may be a place that you want to kick off some discussions. Of course, water has always been a big focus area for the town, and I expect it will continue to be. And like I talked about, Old Home Manor, how you would like us to prioritize that, roads and maintenance funding, all the infrastructure and the town utilities, maintaining a rural community and a business-friendly environment. So all these things could be discussion points for you, just to get you kicked off. Of course, whatever that you want to, to discuss today, and whatever you think are priorities, that's what staff is just looking for. With some of those dollars that we have, that very large fund balance that we have, and some of that ongoing funding, I think we have very preliminary numbers. I think we have about a million dollars open in the general fund. Joe, that number's somewhere between 900 to a million. We're not sure, again, preliminary. But it's a substantial amount of money, and staff will need your guidance where you want us to focus our efforts and where we should prioritize things. And also the CARES Act funding, well, you should probably discuss that. And I guess that's about it. Staff is going to be here for your questions and to help you through anything you might need, but we'd like to hear from you today. And Mayor, I guess I'll turn it over you, to you to.
To me?
Let me see, the next thing on my gen is a German.
Well, dinner won't be here that early, so you might.
I did make a couple of notes, actually, Joe. One was too many slides, just so you know.
Okay. I'll work on that.
So you said we're 4 million over this year, our budget projections? Is that what you said in your slide back?
Yes, yeah.
And then we're getting 3 million back from CARES?
Yes.
Which is 7 million.
Yes.
Just question.
Okay.
Why couldn't we just pay the police station off?
Okay, because you have, you're going to end your fund balance less the required reserve with $5 million, and you're getting another 3 million. So yeah, you could theoretically do that. I really, so let's go back to that, sir.
Well, what's, what's it going to cost us a year for that?
I can't tell you on interest, you're going to be about a 400, 350 to 400,000 dollar payment. So 6 million at 2%. It's going to be 120 to 150,000 dollars a year in interest.
A year in, at times, 25 years.
25 years, yeah. So, two and a half, say 2 million. 2 million in interest. But yeah. Even if. Yes.
I'm just, don't ask questions.
Yeah, and that is true, what you do. You could also just put a down payment on it. You could pay half of it off now.
And do we have any idea what salaries and costs are going to be?
Generally, our salary is, what, what, the numbers that I have so far, we've basically done a 4% across the board.
Is that, was that included in that?
Yes, but nothing else has been included. So there's nothing from aquatic, you know, any of those numbers from there, too. So we will be requesting to use part of those funds.
And Mayor, those very preliminary numbers, but Joe did want to get something in there.
No, I understand.
Just a reasonable model.
I was just curious if that was going to be over and above.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, if, if the town wanted to spend every dollar that they had in reserves, I mean, you're looking at about 8 million bucks. But that means nothing else, so.
Well, we, we, the CARES Act's money, we could put on the roads or put towards the police department.
We're assuming, yeah, one of those two.
Put it towards the police department, personally, in my opinion. But it's up for discussion.
Right now, that, where we're at, we have about a million, 1,000,000, 1,500,000 in roads funding for next year, knowing that we're probably, we're going to increase it to that million, that magic million and a half dollar number. So a few hundred thousand dollars more, we can do that.
You got something to say?
I like the idea of some roadwork. I've been seeing a lot of jokes about fishing on a couple of our streets and the people out there caricatures. So, and I, as I've driven up down one or two of them, a little roadwork wouldn't hurt.
On our vehicle purchasing plan that we started with the, with the police department, knowing that we need so many vehicles per year, we're doing that, but it's not formal, correct? How many within all the departments, each individual department, separating that maintenance from expansion? How many more of those plans should we put in within the other departments as well to, I'm going to say, formalizing a number of to just maintain what we have for, for roads and streets? Can we establish what that number is? And then we know as far as how to budget with extra money, but we know that we need to meet these, meet these lines.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's a very good question. So what I think you're asking about is really asset management and making sure that we're protecting our current assets, our buildings, our infrastructure, all of those things. So we're working on those plans. Oops. I'm not sure how much we could get to within the next couple of months, but those are things that are definitely discussion items with staff. So some of the first ones I had identified again were the asset and the C, I mean, the vehicles and the assets. But you are right that we do need to also have plans for buildings, furnitures and fixtures, air conditionings, and some of that is in our maintenance budget, I think. Buildings, furnitures and fixtures, air conditionings, and some of that is in our maintenance budget, I think. And Frank, you may want to speak to that, we do so many air conditioners or.
Well, it is, I don't care about having air conditioners, but I'm just saying. No, but those are all, you know, I don't want to get too much in the weeds of this, you know. But actually creating where that that financial line is. So that we know we need to allocate that much every year, you know, to stay ahead of it. And actually get it as a hard number. And then we actually know when we look to expand exactly where we are plus or minus.
Right, in this preliminary stage, we don't have all those numbers yet, but we are working. To get those numbers together for you, and so when we come back. With the recommended budget, you'll see better numbers on that.
Yeah, but the concept is exactly what we're working towards is having that, like you said, a baseline that we know we need so many vehicles every year, so many whatever. Every year, come up with that fix.
I think something that we've that we've realized, and I know Jack has brought this up, is that we. We've done way too much just reacting instead of planning. And I think by getting these established, we will have already planned. For these, we know air conditionings units aren't going to last so long, so we might as well put that in the. In that category of we need to put this much away, because we know that that's what it's going to take. And then we're not reacting.
Maybe say one thing about that. Yeah, and just to your point, like when you're looking at road conditions and and asset management for roads. If you've got a good program that looks at the degradation of the roads over time, you can compare. The cost of that versus maybe the interest rate for the police station. And see where it's best to put your money, because it might be that with interest rates low enough. You might want to have that debt service for the police and and fix the roads, because in the end, over time, it might cost more to. Not do the roads now, and then that's exactly what these tools are talking about, go to is to. Give you guys the the council the more information to make those decisions.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so in regards to the CARES Act, my, what immediately came to my mind is half the down payment. On the police department, transfer that money over to police and transfer that million and a half over to roads. That was my thought immediately, so we banked that one million. That we have in reserves, correct, one million, I mean, it's four million, but there's.
Yeah, well, the CARES will get two shots of one point five million.
Right, okay, so moving on from CARES.
Okay.
Speaking, there was one million that you had mentioned.
Yeah, we have about one and a half million that we can spend on ongoing capital items.
And we're four million over projected?
We can spend up to five if so desire, but yeah, but those are still preliminary too, we got to see what the departments are going to bring to us and and why. Because, for example, we know we need plaster to. Know that's a seventy seventy five thousand dollar number, I mean, we've got quite a few of those things that we need to. Get in here before I can give you the exact number.
Didn't we bank the money for the fifty year celebration to carry over to this year?
We we just budgeted for it so we can budget for it next year, so yeah, it's fine.
No, I mean, we were supposed to have it last year and and it was, we were supposed to.
We haven't spent it.
We haven't spent it, okay. And then what are we looking at as far as the aquatic center is concerned? You just brought up the replastering for reopening.
Oh, for reopening, we're going to be able to open just, we had budgeted to run a full season, we never cut that off because we didn't know what it was going to be, so last year's budget is what we're. Working on, so we're fine there, there's no issues there, we do have some capital needs there. We're looking at a pool cover, of course, the replastering and maybe even resurfacing the the deck area, so.
I like the cuts on my feet.
Okay. Well, in that case.
Now, with the vehicle replacement fund, I know for PD, didn't we already discuss setting? One a year, one vehicle a year replacement, two?
Two, two vehicles a year.
And that's just for PD, but not for the rest of.
And we've been buying several, two or three units per year throughout all the other departments too. So building got one, you know, we've we've got a, we've got a few fleet vehicles that we're adding, so. Yeah, because we were lease purchasing them, where we'd buy fifteen cars.
Right.
Pay them off over five years, do the same thing, and then we did transfer money a couple of years ago over. And we basically paid off our lease purchase, so at that time, the direction from council was pay cash for your cars.
That's all I have for right now, thank you.
I like the idea of paying down on the police department. I mean, interest rates are low, but still, if we jump in there and drop that down a little bit, I think it will help us. If we use the other part for roads, once we get a better idea of exactly. Where we need to go and how we need to go from Frank or whoever. On roads after we get a complete departmental report. I know there's some other projects that should come in with the departmental requests, and I like to wait and see those before we go hard and fast on anything.
That it, Tom?
That's it.
Joe, on a large purchases for retail, like large fifty thousand plus, does that go in a special fund or is that just into retail in total?
Okay, so generally in the department budgets, if it's under fifty thousand, we keep it in their departments. Now, this is excluding sewer and water, because they they're in enterprise funds, they their numbers have to stay in their budget. And then anything of fifty or above goes into the capital improvement fund, which is the one percent sales tax pays for that. So and those are the things that we go out to bid for and stupid projects, so just in general, if it's over fifty, it's in a capital improvement fund.
Yeah, I like the idea that Frank said, I mean, the interest rates low, I'm not a fan of paying interest by any means, but the interest rates low enough to. Keep a payment, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. Blow all your money, right, so.
Yeah, so we have a few theories on that is you don't borrow money. You don't take out a twenty year loan on a ten year road, because you don't want to, you want it, you don't want to pay on a road that's going to wear out. Capital, yeah, so a capital asset like a police department, that's got a fifty year useful life. And so paying it off over twenty five years, it's the current citizens will pay on it. But the people moving into town will also pay on it, so it spreads that cost over. At least half the useful life of that asset, and that's when it's good to go out and borrow money, so in general, if we didn't where we're at right now. You know, I'd like I did before, recommend, you know, the twenty five year time period. Plus, at the ten year time period, we can look and see where we're at and we can pay it down and re-harmortize the debt, depending, you know, where interest rates are at that time, so. Using debt for the police department is fine. The kicker here is we have three million dollars from the Arizona CARES Act, this is one time money.
And we have to use by.
I don't know, I don't know the what it, what there's constraints on using this money, we do not, we haven't had any guidance whatsoever on that. But if it's similar to the first CARES Act distribution, basically, we used it to pay our police department salaries. And then that freed up that money in the general fund, so then we could use it for whatever council decides, so. It was really your discussion.
So without taking a vote, so I don't get hollered at.
Yeah, don't take a vote.
The CARES Act's money, it sounds like people, the majority. I can't say majority, because that's more of a vote, it sounds like the council's leaning towards. Half on PD and half on roads. Is what I'm hearing.
We would have to transfer that half to PD to clear it up, to transfer it over to the general fund to send to the roads.
Okay, but half on roads, half on PD. I'm. You can't say if you're in favor or opposed. No. I I like Tom's idea, and this this whole budget process is is stretched out from now till when? June?
Yeah, your first, so on May eleventh, we'll make a presentation after we've compiled all the numbers. And on May eighteenth is when we bring it back for you guys to have a this meeting again with a lot more detail.
And then actually voted on in June.
Yes, sir, because you have to publish it and. You'll do the tentative budget on May twenty sixth.
I just want to be perfectly clear, we're not voting now.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, staff is just asking.
General.
General priorities on the type of things that you guys want us to examine in the budget.
To start talking about where we want to start splitting this money or that money. That I I want to see some more numbers, just like Tom said, let's start seeing these budgets come in from the departments and. And again, with a little bit more focus on what are ongoing expenses and what are our improvement wishlist expenses? Yeah, but always just trying to give them an idea of how to run the. Direct it. Well, we can always change. Chief's wins wishlist is for a police department. We don't care what she. He has his time, he's done.
If we get a formal line of budget though, and then we've seen what we've got available and what we need to ship here and there, I mean.
And I'm told there's about ten thousand dollars running around for the dog park. Now, I don't want to go into that.
Don't worry about that.
There's a voice coming from.
We're covered.
I understand it though, before somebody else decides to run off with it.
I promise you, I promise you I will.
Ten thousand dollars for the dog park?
It's it's going to go fast, yeah, it needs some stuff over there. I mean, it's a daily, we've even got people that are herding their animals over there, and if they ever start coming to us, look out below.
We do have a line item request in next year's budget for it, so.
Okay, let's talk about something else.
What are some some?
Can you go back to one slide, please? I think it was slide eleven, if I remember right.
Can you try?
There it is. No, one more.
That's a good.
I'm not going the right way.
Reverse, Joe, reverse.
There we go.
There we go, you want to go.
Is that the one? Yeah, no, that one, there you go, that one.
Okay.
Well, I was lying, it was the slide fourteen, that's even worse. So these are what you want to talk about, basically.
Well, these are some things that staff has identified that, you know, are kind of needs out there. And make sure that. I mean, that you would be in agreement that these are priority areas or things that you think that the town.
The general plan for sure, I mean.
Yeah.
Josh, what do you think about the general plan, you think it needs to be updated?
State statute requires it.
Okay.
And then it has to go to the voters, correct?
Two thousand twenty four is the next time it has to be about.
Is that a expensive thing?
It depends.
So you're going like this.
And the big picture thing is, is that super expensive, but it could be.
It can get up to, I've seen it over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars before.
Really?
But it's a guiding document that lasts you for ten years.
But based on how the town's progressing, I mean, don't you think it's a little outdated right now, even though it's not?
I would rewrite it immediately if I could.
Right, I mean, looking at it's pretty outdated, town's moving too fast.
It gets quoted a lot.
I just don't, seeing what I've seen over the last two years, I don't think it reflects the true vision of this community.
Correct.
That's my opinion.
So that's.
So that's two fifty.
Two fifty.
Okay, what's next?
And I don't want you to get too hung up on how much the dollars are today. If, you know, if if. If you give us the general direction, we'll work those numbers for you. And come back to tell you what can't or can't be afforded, you know, but just prioritize kind of for us.
The other option is to set a date when you want us to start rewriting it and maybe set aside a little bit each year until the.
March seventeen.
When when does it, when does it do?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty four.
Oh, so we got a little time, but.
Yeah.
Well, I would recommend sooner, but we don't have to.
What I.
But if we did, if we do it. Let's say twenty, next year, it would last ten years from next year or ten years from.
It's ten years from the beginning.
Adoption, so next year, yeah.
And I. That plan will take quite a while to get done, so I mean, it has probably a year, it takes public input, it takes.
Yeah, so there's a huge citizen participation portion of it, and then drafting all the maps and then all of the elements.
And much like Topsy, we just grow, but from what Eric said, the fact our last master plan. We, the town has developed over the last eight, six, eight, seven years, ten years, I've been here eleven, and it. It seems to be growing, getting better, more stuff, so I think a prudent beginning of a review and. The new plan wouldn't hurt rather than the last minute jump in the water.
What about the master plan?
Go ahead. I always have something to say, but.
Right, so this is with Cindy's background, she's. An expert in this is why I was looking at her too, but in general, the town has, in the past, we have some. I would say, much like the general plan, we've got an old sewer master plan that just looks at the east side of town. So that plan's woefully outdated, I think it's from two thousand four. We've got a transportation plan that was done in two thousand seven. That's a pretty good document, but it needs to be updated. Generally, these master plans, you look at updating them every. Three or four years or sometimes more often, if you've got a big boom or a. Major subdivision like a bright star or something came in that was unexpected, or if Del Rio had popped, that might have changed all the plannings. We don't really have a water master plan, so that's the sorts of plans we're looking at, and what these plans do is. You'll analyze them and you'll look at the land use, it ties in with the development side of things, because you're looking at the highest and best use, you kind of look at the water usage based off zoning. That sort of thing for the water master plan, and it tells you. Even I've seen plans even tell you what size trunk lines you need in certain areas, so when a developer comes in, he may see. Say he only needs an eight inch water line, but you know it needs to be a sixteen in that area to serve everybody else. So that's when you can work out deals to upsize those lines and get them sized properly, that's what these documents are, they're living and they and they. Change as the development comes in and changes, so they're only as good as the information you have in them, so that's where it's good to update them. Sure.
So the general plan should address a lot of these master plans, not the actual master plans themselves, but the conceptual level. Of the transportation map, a sewer and water map of anticipated lengths that need to be extended and. Anticipated sizes, and then the master plan would go delve into the actual specifics and get very detailed with those, but it all. I should stem from our general plan, and right now, it just doesn't.
And and I'll also just say before, real quick, that tonight, you'll be seeing the master plan for Old Home Manor, which is. A small area, but it'll give you a good idea for exactly what a master plan will show and how we can use that.
It is, are these also on a time limit, have to be redone every so many years?
I I don't think there's a statutory time for these, but again, they tend to get outdated with development every. Three to five years, but if you have an economy crash like we had several years ago. You could go a lot of years without needing to update it, depending on development, it's really development driven.
And the cost on that?
They're going to be all over the place, depending on the detail, what we have them do.
What we just spent.
I don't, I don't know, Mayor, I'd hate to throw a number out there, I I don't know that we've had one done lately.
What do you know, how many costs?
For Old Hope Manor?
Two twenty five.
Two twenty five?
The Old Hope Manor?
Yeah, and it.
So if you're doing the.
Am I right, Frank?
I would have to look that up, but that's, I know we've done other places I've worked, we've done updates in the two hundred thousand dollar range, bigger. Bigger. Larger. Infrastructure, bigger utilities. Bigger sizes, but they're probably in that, in that range, but, uh, we could, we can get better numbers. That's, that's why this.
And how long does it take to do that?
Oh, less than a general plan update, you know, a few months, and, and again, it's gonna. Um, my experience is with the bigger utility, so I'm not really sure, so.
Yeah, you're.
Months, maybe.
Maybe up to a year, depending on how it, a lot of it.
What's already done?
For just starting the plans, it's all the, the zoning information and land use information, sometimes takes a while. Uh, you, and you'll see tonight, they, they look even to census data and building permit records, and that, that's the sort of stuff they look at. To get these plans, so some of that stuff takes a while to.
So you know what's gonna sort of start this is our impact fee study, because it's gonna have the infrastructure improvement plan that we have to have, and that's gonna have sort of. Putting all this together.
Yeah, it all, it all meshes together.
Yeah.
What about the CIP?
So the CIP, we can do, we can generally do in-house by ourselves, and, um. Of course, once we have master plans, it'll be better, easier to put the CIP together, but we can start it, and. In-house, have that done hopefully the next, before the budget's adopted, at least, uh, general outline of the CIP. And really, it just takes the projects that staff knows needs to be done. Um, and puts it in the right year, uh, when we can design it, when we can build it, and finds out how we can fund it. So in-house.
To that then, just regular staff?
Staff time.
And you said we can get that done in a month, then?
Yeah.
I heard you say that.
Soon. Staff has already done a lot of the work, so we're just working, um, cause, uh. Staff is helping, uh, give me all the information so that, um, I can understand where they're at and, and. Help with that process, but the CIP plan will be part of the budget plan that comes to you.
Vehicle, we've already talked about, Old Home Manor, I don't know what that is.
That's tonight.
But just that, you know, it continues to be important, I mean, it's a very large piece of land, and we've. Um, put a lot into it already, and it, um, you know, hopefully it can be successful, but, um, we just wanted to hear. Counsel's thoughts on that as well, and again, you're gonna hear a lot more about it tonight, I think there's been some great planning that's gone on. And, um. But just in general.
I understand.
And then. Sorry.
Here I am with my hand raised. Go ahead.
I see you doing all kinds of stuff over there, you know.
If you had something.
No, I had questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um. I had questions, oh, impact fee study, or, or when are, when are we, what's the projected time?
Uh, we're gonna kick it off in the first part of April. That's gonna be about a year-long process. Yeah, it takes about that long to get all the way through, because we're gonna have to have public input, and there's gonna be a lot of staff. Um, actually, we just budgeted to do it, so it's in our, it's in our capital improvement fund right now, so yes.
Okay, and Frank, refresh my memory, per mile of road. What were you looking at, or was it a million per mile for sewer? What was, there was a million dollars.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
Per road improvements. Cost.
Cost for road improvements or sewer?
Well, uh, road.
Oh, uh, well, we had initially, when we were looking back at the ballot question, we looked at, uh. You know, to, to maintain the roads in the current condition, about one point six million a year total. But I think we were already spending some money towards that at that time, so we're up to. What was it this year before the CARES Act money, it was about one or one point one million, I think. Yeah, so. That's what we looked at, and, and that's where, if we can implement. I don't wanna take up all the time, but probably one of my requests for Public Works would be to start looking into a pavement management. Uh, program that'll help better objectively show some of this information over time, but, uh. And that'll help, but right now, that's kind of our best guess is in the. One and a half million dollar a year range, just for road maintenance, not improvements or expansions. Type of thing, if you're looking to widen the road or something, that's not included in those estimates, this is just seal codes, overlays, reconstructs.
And that includes staff time and materials and everything?
Um, that's more just the contractor work.
Frank, how much is the software you keep talking about?
Uh, we're putting those numbers together, but, uh, I've seen it anywhere. One-time cost fifty to a hundred thousand. Uh, to start it up, and, and then, then lesser. Dollar amounts every year for inventory, you can either do those in-house sometimes, or. Like the county hires a van with lasers and stuff on it to inventory those roads, so it depends on how you go about. The annual assessments, um, to manage that system. But generally, the first year, you look at bringing someone in to inventory the roads. It's basically a database in different formats, and create that database and set it up for the town.
I would save quite a bit on manpower, man hours.
Yeah, it's, uh. Yeah, and what it does is it gives council a good, a good look, I'm sorry?
What's the ROI on the software, what do you think, have you guys projected that, is that what you're working on right now?
Uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, cost estimates to, to put in budget requests for that. Would be one of the examples of what Public Works would be putting in for some budget requests, but. I'm sure other departments have other budget requests they're putting in as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but I don't think there's a return, a monetary return on investment, it's just for planning purposes.
Well, there's gotta be some kind of return if you want the software, I mean, what's, if it's gonna save you time, manpower hours. It's gotta save some kind of time, it's just for data analysis? That's all the software does?
Yeah, I'm confused, I don't really look on return on investment. As a government agency, so.
Well.
Um. Cindy, if.
So the software really allows us to do planning. Um, I'm sure we could get someone to do an ROI, but it really helps us. Not waste our time doing. Roads in the right, I don't know how to say it, but we do them in the right order, so it, it tells us this road. Is worse than that road, it's, they're really planning doc, planning type softwares.
It's, it's basically, and, and the thing I always say with pavement management is try to keep the good roads good. So that's one reason we're doing the big slurry program this year, is for example, if you can slurry those roads for. Say, say three dollars a square yard. And this program would show that if you let that go three more years, you might have to overlay that at twenty to twenty-five dollars a square yard. And the pavement management program will actually help you generate those graphs in charge to show council deferred maintenance, and what the cost of maybe putting one road off. Versus another road and help prioritize those, and overall, the actual budget, if you can invest. Say, increase your budget by ten percent, here's the, the average condition rating, you can raise the roads, um, and those sorts of. Inputs, so it's, it's an analysis tool, but it, it does kind of help give objective criteria. To, to help plan which road you do, instead of maybe throwing a dart at a dartboard or something. Right, and just exactly how to quantify that depends, because you have various funding levels. That you can allocate to it, because in your, in a taxing situation. So, um, you've got unlimited needs with limited resources generally. When you look at things like roads that work off taxes, it's if private industry could do it and make money off of it, you wouldn't need the tax to fix the roads, but. So it, it shows you how to ration those dollars to fix the roads and get the best bang for your buck, so. That's, and the reason it hadn't been done in the past for Chino Valley is because if you're only spending. You know, five, six years ago, I don't know that they were spending any money for contractor work on the roads, you just, it just wasn't there, so. Why spend fifty thousand to a hundred thousand to start up a system when you don't have any money to put in the roads? But now that you're seeing the investment in the roads, it, it makes sense now to look at something like that. To, to better budget and plan for the roads, the road maintenance.
The general plan, that, that's a ballot item, isn't it, it is an approved deal.
Every ten years, right?
The committees that are created to create the general plan are generally citizen. Citizen-based.
Uh, usually the committees created don't actually write the general plan, they will review what either staff or the contractor writes. Consultant rights and provide feedback, uh, the citizen review, uh, provides also feedback from the community. So that when it does go for referendum, after, uh, it's approved by town council. That the community has been involved in it enough to know what's in it so that they will vote for.
Okay, the, the staff does not write this, it, it went out to an out. I should ask it as a question. Do you plan on staff being part of writing the general plan, or is it done with an outside firm?
Um, it can be either one, uh, with current staff levels, and my discussion with Cindy. I probably don't have the time to draft it myself, um, I can take a supervisory role on it, but. The more staff time we put towards drafting it, the less money we have to spend paying a consultant.
Okay, I remember on the last one, it was an outside firm that.
That is correct.
That did it, and, and they, in a, a great amount of public input towards it. And.
I can't say how much public participation went into the last one.
The, a lot.
Was there a lot?
Yeah, you remember that, Tom?
Yeah, there was quite a bit, and there's people clamoring to get on that committee for this.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're coming out of the woodwork, when are you gonna start this?
Yeah.
Okay, because I think the, the general plan is more citizen-based on what the citizens want. And not what the town staff wants, so I'm, I'm trying to, you know, politely draw the line here. As far as we represent the public.
Yeah, Josh, if I may, and Josh is right, um, my preference would be to hire an outside consulting firm with staff managing the project. And they will have, like, if you've already been to the process, you know, it's citizens, it's businesses, it's stakeholders, it's everyone is involved in. Because it is such an intense process, there is no way staff, I mean, we. Take away all the other duties that he, he was trying to do, and even though, um, staff has the knowledge and the expertise. They likely just don't have the time to do it. I'm guessing couple hundred, two, three hundred grand, I, I don't really know at this point, but. My guess would be around two fifty, that's what they, you know, the going rate of consulting plans are these days.
I, I was going down.
But don't hold me to that, we're gonna have to go out and, and get more detail on that.
I, I was going through these just to get an idea, because to me, money make, has, has a difference in these, and. Time factor that takes, so if it takes something longer to do, you need to start earlier. Um, the fifty year celebration, if I can continue.
Sure.
Thank you, um, we had ten thousand dollars in that, is that right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
And that's worth staying.
We spent five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, you better replenish that.
I was. You have ten thousand dollars.
Anyway, I think the fiftieth celebration should take place in September, uh, the Fourth of July, from what the Forest Service is saying, I. Don't think it's gonna happen, I think they're gonna put restrictions on early, you know, stop restrictions early, so I really don't think. That we're gonna see fireworks.
Is that because it's dry?
Yes. We've had a lot.
I love, I love fireworks, I'm always fighting for them.
Hang on.
Mayor Miller, we were, one of the ideas or options. We were tossing around was the possibility of, we're not clear of this COVID yet. And we were thinking of going back out to Old Home Manor. And have a parking where people could park, distance park, to get out of their cars, we can't control that, you know. Um, and just shoot them off at Old Home Manor, and pretty much leave it at that, at that point.
And, and maybe that we can, uh, but the way they were talking, it sounded really highly like, unlikely.
Mayor Miller, should I go ahead and keep, I'm already moving forward on the fireworks.
I'm not gonna tell you. I, I don't, I'm not gonna tell you to stop now, at this point, but we get our permit from the fire department, right, to do that?
Yes, sir.
So if the restrictions come on, then the fire department.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and they inspect the site.
I'm going, Matt, you go, and then, Amy.
It's just to touch on that too, the, uh, the local conditions are just one factor that they take into consideration with. The fire issue, because of the area we're in, much of our staff goes out to other areas. California, Nevada, New Mexico during their fire seasons, so it's not just the, the local fire hazard. It's also stressing the, the local agency staffing needs, that was also a, a concern. And one of the things that was mentioned and kind of tossed around last year was maybe putting the fireworks on the fiftieth celebration.
See, you're stepping on, you're raining on my parade.
That's something we had talked about.
Yeah, and that's my, if we can't do Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July, I would like to do the fireworks.
We could do both if you would like.
Well. Yeah, maybe, but I'm just saying, if we can't, maybe we can push it there, yes, ma'am.
Is this high enough?
Yeah, I can see you now.
Okay, um, so the last two years, we have not had fireworks, correct, or has it been three?
Two.
Two, okay. Okay, so. I was part of one of them. Two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that, the money, now I was told, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, aside from the deposit, it was refundable. The expenses for the fireworks, we were to be refunded. Aside from the deposit, so there should be two years of money for the fireworks already. Okay, that's a budget thing.
We just budget one year at a time, so.
So is that Matt, where's that money?
We just rolled it into our reserves.
Okay, and what's the average for fireworks?
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. So we could have a heck of a show at the fifty celebration for thirty grand?
Yeah, we can increase the amount that we budget for.
What had been touched on, uh. Was that, in addition to, well, when we didn't shoot off the fireworks on the Fourth. It was tossed around to, um, do a small show, and we were already setting up. And getting a smaller show to shoot off near the police department or the fiftieth fireworks. That was going underway, and then, you know what else, you know, I did it, the COVID hit it, which pretty much put that, but we were lining that up. A smaller show at a much, much smaller amount of money. So, it's up to Mayor and Council as to what is left.
So that means that the rollover was because it, it went back to the general fund and the designated fund. Say, went out of that, or is that fund grown by the two or three years, whatever it is?
It's all general fund money.
Yes.
So we just didn't spend it, so it's, it stayed in the bank, that's all it did, yes.
Well, she's asked you a question.
You guys have matching mustaches, have you?
I had mine first.
We're twins.
He's better trimmed than you are, you like it better that way? I mean, it's the same coloring and everything.
It's an age thing.
What did you think about the, the fireworks?
I don't care.
You don't care?
So. We need it more than ever.
We do.
And and I agree with you.
I have zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt real quick, thank you for all the great discussion, but just remember that please don't talk over one another because the record is not going to be clear of who's speaking where. Thank you.
Talk at once. Councilmember Mendoza has zero interest in fireworks. But don't vote on anything, okay? Or don't even mention vote.
No, no voting today.
We get a marker to change the date on my T-shirt?
Lois, you got a date on it? Well, it's still the fiftieth anniversary. I mean, it's fifty first.
Last year's date on it, though.
Well, that's, that's when the fifty.
Just Marco, make it fifty first.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
We're getting new T-shirt order.
But the reason.
We can't, can't afford it.
The reason why I wanted to, the reason why I wanted to go over these things was to ask this question. And and others, but does one feed the other one? In other words, do you need to have a general plan done before you do the master plan or vice versa? Sir?
No, go ahead.
What?
Throw your way down on the bottom by now.
We're done. Department requests, I don't care about them so much, especially PB. PB's done for twenty-five years.
The general plan would be the priority on there because probably be master plans would be, depending on the master plan, but be better put together if it could feed off what comes out of the the general plan.
So it'd be better to have a general plan first and then create the master plan off the general plan, basically?
Yes, but we need to update it.
We got both, right?
I mean, in theory, I would say general plan should come first.
Yes, ma'am. You gonna say something?
I'm, I don't know. Um, no, I would be supportive of two fifty, three hundred for the general plan. Ish. A lot of ish's going on. I would be in favor of getting that as a priority.
I am too. I just didn't know. So that would have to get done in a year's time, which would puts the master plan off until next year? Or the year after?
Year after.
Well, the, the, it's it's master, it's a general plan and then master plans. So it's not just one master plan. It could be in the water, it could be in the sewer, it could be. Oh, gotcha. It's not just a master. It's not just a master plan. Thank you. Multiple. Got you. I understand.
Frank, what needs to be? The sewer and the water master plans is what need to be updated, more importantly.
Yeah, we don't even have a water master.
Okay, we have a water master, so we need a water master plan and we need a sewer.
Transportation needs to be done as well, because
Transportation.
I think our town code has a requirement that we have an adopted street map.
Hey, I think, I think I gotta differ with you on that one, Frank. We do have a water plan for Old Hope Manor, do we not now?
Right.
Okay, so there you go.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna hear about that tonight. And as as long as you're, and I guess we're just trying to get your general feelings on these types of things because we will look into it more detailed and, you know, get advice from, um, the professionals, which ones they can move forward with, that kind of thing. So each master plan will be a little different.
Okay, all right.
Corey, where would you like, well, you're being awfully quiet.
Oh, I'm, I'm just holding that.
Winding them up.
Yes.
He's gonna holler at me.
It's okay.
Oh, good.
Department requests is one that, as as a council, and I know that there's things that I see around town that, you know, I'm unhappy with. And a lot of it has to do with code enforcement, and we're gonna have a a more thorough code enforcement presentation coming up next month or something like that. That we, where I personally have had an issue is when I go to to develop something and you go and the requirements that the town has in order to get your strategic occupancy, I I find I, I'm gonna not say unreasonable, but it's unreasonable when I need to spend X amount of money or any other developer needs to spend X amount of money to to meet the the requirements of the town. When I look throughout the town and I don't see these being applied through ninety percent of the town. It's like it gets applied once and then that's it. And meanwhile, we can, we see these junky properties, you know, and come to find out when, when I brought this up before, I thought that we had a, a hole in our U D O of why these weren't being taken care of, that we need to create, you know, regulations. Well, come to find out, most of these are already in our, our code. We're just not enforcing it. So code enforcement to me is just really, really lacking. But I'm one of, I'm one of seven of you, so I can't say, you know, Josh, this is what I want done, or, you know, Cindy, this is what I want done. But I wanna know if the rest of you have the same outlook. And as you drive through our town, do you like what you see? Do you see, you know, room for improvements there and and what needs to be done about it? So as we're starting to to go into our budget process, and something I've told, you know, asked Josh, that if, basically, if if the council sees this the way I do and he needs more staff to enforce this, then it needs to come up under department requests, you know? And we need to authorize, you know, more full-time positions, which will then definitely affect the budget. And again, we need to get these needs out there and what these long-term, because when we were looking at the budget there, one of the things is personnel and and retirement funds and what have you for that. That employees are quite expensive. And I'm gonna say that the town has done a very good job, staff, at keeping the full-time employee numbers down. But are we getting the work done that the town needs? Do we have enough road people? Do we have enough code enforcement? Do we have enough police department? Do, you know, these, they department heads, they need to, you know, if we want things changed, we need to say so, and then they need to put those in their budgets. And and then we'll see, well, maybe we can live with, you know, the junk because we don't wanna pay for it. But at least that's, that's how the system works.
And I'm not sure. I think I was talking to Cindy about this last week. One, I agree with you. And I think when code enforcement first, when we first said, hey, go get them, there was a lot of backlash because there was a lot of misinterpretation and people didn't understand why they couldn't have, you know, went back to the flags and blah, blah, blah. And so they were like, hey, why are you taking our flags down? We're just this, you know, measly little coffee shop. So there was a lot of little, from my perspective, there was a lot of nitpicking at little things and not really addressing the big, the big issues as far as code enforcement was concerned. And so I think that's kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong, we kind of put the halt on like, hey, slow down because this is, people are just getting really upset. To your point, I wholeheartedly agree. You shouldn't be held to a different standard than people that built ten years ago and then just let it go. And what I was talking to Cindy about is if I won the lottery, and I, she mentioned this would possibly be a grant for, that Maggie could look into possibly, would be facades on the buildings if every building had a facade down the highway, so it all looked nice and uniform. And mission accomplished, and that's contingent on if I win the lottery, though. But that's what I would like to see. I agree with you. I think the town should be.
Can I interrupt just a second to that, since we're there? As we start looking at the general plan and, because I was on the tail end of the last one and the community input there, a lot of those type of issues are brought up and it's discussed amongst those committees. Do we, does Chino Valley want to step up to that point of requiring facades on the buildings? What type of colors do we wanna be? You know, go to, go over to Sedona. It's, it's incredible. You can't recognize a McDonald's because the yellow arches are, you know, offensive.
It's a huge tourist town. That's a big difference.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other.
Right.
I'm just saying, that's what the general plan establishes.
Making a business.
For the town.
Become a color that the town wants it to. I mean, I can understand Sedona, the McDonald's has to be the only green, you know, green golden arches in the world, but we're not Sedona, and I mean, we're far from Sedona. We're a good-looking town, but we don't need that.
And and that actually then goes through the general plan committee or or what have you. You know, so.
Um, so the general plan would not address the design review criteria. That would actually need to be addressed in the U D O. We'd have to create design review criteria that would then be evaluated and a requirement for developments that would come in. The general plan could include in the land use section or one of the other sections, it could include a desire to create or a goal to create those design review criteria or general things that you would want the town to look for. But it would have to be codified in the U D O if you want staff to have any teeth to be able to require new developments coming in to require a certain level of design review architecturally, aesthetically, or or whatever. With that said, there's a couple issues that I think are being kind of intermingled. There's the code enforcement aspect which revolves around, you know, outdoor stores not being screened properly, junkyards or things being stored on properties that shouldn't be stored on, like Conex boxes, where there's not a primary use. There's but when it comes down to colors of buildings, landscaping, maybe the landscaping has died that needs to be replaced. Those things are already in our code that we can require. That's a code issue. If the landscaping on a property, like commercial property, if they've let that die, then they need to, they need to replace that. If a property was developed ten, fifteen years ago, I have no way of saying whether they were approved or not based on, we didn't keep site plan reviews way back then. So the issue with properties not maintaining like the pavement requirement or landscaping requirement or whatnot, it's really hard to go back historically and say they were required to do that, but they're not maintaining. So there's, there's kind of two different things here. Going forward, any developer that comes to the town that develops new, we are holding them to the standards fully required by our U D O. If somebody comes to site plan review, there's a proportionality. We can require a certain amount of landscaping or paving based on what they're proposing or adding to the site. So as we continue to go through new developments or new developers coming to town or redevelopments of existing properties, you'll start to see landscaping go back in. You'll start to see the paving go in, but we can't, as a code enforcement, go to a commercial business that was allowed to go in with dirt or gravel and say you're required to paint. So that's not a code enforcement issue.
That was the whole Freeman thing.
No, he was new. Freeman was new. He was going from a farm to a store, and that was what his big thing was.
So before we get too far off, let's rein back in it. Are you looking for more code enforcement as far as the budget, but not going too much more into properties?
I think that's what we're discussing fully. We're not voting.
I feel like we have a teacher behind us.
I'm looking at what we wanna try to do between the U D O and the general plan and code enforcement and everything else. I believe it's unfair for two council members to be the U D O committee without any, we need to expand that committee if you want all this stuff done. These people that are gonna be involved in the general plan need to be involved in the U D O then. Otherwise, we're spinning a wheel.
My recommendation would not be to write the general plan or the U D O by committee. That would be my recommendation.
So you're gonna leave it to two people and bless it as it comes out of there?
If I may, there's three people on the U D O committee at least, Lon, Corey, myself. And I'm trying to interpret all this because a lot of businesses are coming to me and they're going away. They're out of this town. And I'm trying to find out, well, what paragraph is that about? So that we can get it where we're a business-friendly organization or a town.
If I may, council, I think we have to stick to the agendized budget, you know, priority discussion today, but these are good conversations that we can continue to have, but I think we have to stay on our agendized discussions.
Are you gonna break the rules?
No, on that note, I just wanna point out department requests. So Corey, you would like to see if code enforcement has any request to hire an additional employee? This is how I'm walking around this. You would like to see that in the department requests in order to address these things.
That's great, and that's just what we need to hear today, what your priorities are. If I haven't listed it, that's what you, those were just ideas, whatever your discussions are or your thoughts are, priorities, and we'll do our best to.
Are are the missing people still in the budget, like Lois? And maybe assistant town manager? Are those people still in the budget? Is that budgeted, but it's not spent? So it rolls back into the budget? I guess is my question. Does that make sense?
Laura, do you wanna address your, the personnel?
You don't have a microphone?
Issues.
The employees who have left employment, those F T E counts are still in the budget. I don't believe that the assistant town managers in the budget because that was previous to last year or this current year, so that's not in there.
And then we're also, Laura's getting strategic personnel requests from all the departments at requesting new staff. So we'll be, we'll be bringing those to you also.
We don't know what that is.
We have about seventeen requests, so I'm gonna summarize them.
Seventeen employees?
Seventeen different requests from different, different departments, so we wanna prioritize them. And the reason why we go through a strategic staffing request is to ensure that everybody is given the same opportunity to, you know, speak their voice and make their request, and we're transparent, and then we'll prioritize them. And then we can see how they fit into the priority of the council and and the budget.
Okay. So do we beat that slide up?
Good discussion.
Can we address the cares fund money? I mean, my grandkids are gonna be paying for it, so why not, right? So, sorry, we're live. Not really. Um, so we're gonna get about.
Not really sorry, I'm not really.
Not really sorry. Um, so we're gonna get about three million. Correct, okay, and we, that three million has to be dedicated to public safety or COVID-impacted.
We are not sure yet.
Okay, the last go-round was?
The last go-round, we used it to offset the cost of our police department salaries.
Okay.
Which freed up money in the general fund. And money in general fund, council has full discretion on how that's used. So you decided to use it on roads. So we use it either on Road Two North or, let's say, Two North.
How does council, what, what do you guys think about that? Do you just wanna bank it? My, my thought process is put half of it as the down payment on the P D building, move that other.
I think, I think when we.
To roads.
When we talked earlier about it, Tom brought up, and Corey agreed with him about finding out the, the third numbers, right?
Yeah, and the criteria. We'll bring it back. As soon as we know what the criteria, and I know the league's gonna be putting that out really soon, so.
Okay.
We'll have it.
Yeah, let's, let's go through the next step within the budget conversation and then we'll, we'll get closer to where we wanna actually put money at that point. Yes, is that?
Yeah, no, that's just, I know, I was very happy about that last year when we were able to move that money and then move the P D money over to the general fund and work on roads, so. I mean, it's the majority of the complaining people, so the roads. I know it's important to some council members, so.
We are, we, do we already have in the budget for the police station a certain amount of down payment?
Uh, no, we're gonna pay cash for the design, which we did. And we also had, we just put a plug number in for five hundred thousand for furniture equipment and all the stuff. Once they move in, they're gonna, it's gonna be expensive, you know, getting everything done, so we have five hundred thousand. So we're gonna pay about eight hundred thousand of the six million dollars. So I was planning on borrowing five point five million just to give us a little bit of a buffer. So the intent is if, let, we go out to bid, July, we get the numbers. What I'd like to do is have the financing lined up so that your first motion, your first action item can be, I don't think you can approve a building unless you have the money. So, but I'd like those, basically, to happen at the same meeting, that you approve the financing and then you approve the. So, but I'd like those basically to happen at the same meeting that you approve the financing and then you approve the awarding of the bid for the contract.
Okay.
So, and then also part of that financing is refinancing that two thousand ten issue to take advantage of the lower interest rates. Which will save us about a hundred and twenty thousand a year for the next ten years.
Okay. Can you go forward a slide, please?
There's a typo up there.
There is?
Yep. Old Home Manor is not an industrial park. It is a business park.
That is the name, right?
Yep. Yep. That's why we have an engineer.
So what are we talking about with water companies? Who put that up there? Is that you?
So this came from your strategic plan document. I just cut and pasted it out of there and.
Oh, from last year?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that was. I'm sorry, that was with the uh idea of purchasing some of the water companies in town, starting with the one down at Yavapai Estates or whatever. Well, hey.
Well, hey. Right, I understand that.
It failed. On the ballot, yeah.
Right, right. So I'm not sure that we could probably go out to do something that right now, but staff can still continue to look at different options on water, you know, texture is a priority.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that if we went with the one item and we made it clear, because before it was general, it was a general approval to buy. All, any and all water companies, right?
Yeah, I'd have to name them.
Two top, there were two items on the.
Yes, um, the roads and this.
Well, the, the water item actually listed all of the water companies in town. And so it would have been up to the, when the council deemed it necessary, the voters would have given permission for any of the water companies. But it, you're right, it wasn't listed as one specific, but it actually named each water company.
Okay.
Per requirements from the Supreme Court case.
So if we say, I would like to see us, if we could get ahold of Laura. I think it's a good place. I, I talked with Lonnie about it. He said, he thought it was a good well, you know, said we have to re-drill the well because it's not deep enough or something. I, I, huh? You're turning your nose up.
No, I just.
You're not allowed to turn your nose up.
There's, yeah, he's, he's right. And there's maybe water quality concerns.
He said it wasn't deep enough is why.
For a minute, for what the town would wanna do, right?
So what does the council think about for uh aggressively or pursuing this further? Just one company at a time.
We'd have to take it to a vote and a special elections.
We would have to go to a vote and I, I don't know, what's a vote cost? Anybody know?
Depends if you're dead.
Water is a good thing. Twenty some thousand.
Yeah, we're probably roughly between twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand for a special election.
A special, unless we tagged on some other ballot that was coming.
And then we're probably about thirty to thirty-five.
Hey Frank, if, if uh Willhite failed, that goes back to the state? The water company failed?
No, not necessarily. It's a private entity.
Somebody's gotta take it over.
So yeah, the state would probably ask the town to, to run it on an interim basis, which actually has happened with Willhite before. Um, that's back in, if I think back to what Mark Holmes said when he was here at that time. But uh, in oh nine, I guess there were some issues there in, in the state and the town and even Prescott Water helped out. Trying to keep that water system running until it got back up and running again.
Prescott, Prescott watered it. They have to try to buy it.
Okay.
They're in the same boat as us, as they would need permission from their voters to buy it. Never, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We gotta start somewhere and sometime to do something to expand. But we're gonna be still talking about this ten years down the line.
But.
Since, since I got on council, I, I, that was one of my things was to expand our water and sewer. Um, I, I was kinda disappointed that we didn't center street and didn't put a water line up it, you know? Because we had the street tore up, just like stick a water line there at the same time. Um, but we didn't and, and that's hindsight. We can't change it now. So what's the well gonna cost to re-drill that well? I have no idea.
Didn't, lots. Didn't we just uh month, two months ago, maybe talk about buying some water up by road six or somewhere up that way also?
It was paid for water.
Oh, okay.
So yes, I think that I could support going back after to put it back on a ballot again. But I, I wouldn't, I don't think there was anything wrong with the first time. I think it was because it was paired up with the other.
Do you think we should go with all the companies?
I think it would be a good financial, since I'm throwing in the word financial, so we can keep talking about this. That we can pursue the water companies again and to go to, for one at a time versus going for all of, I would say, why not list them all again?
And as a rule, that's how you eat a whale, one bite at a time.
Yes, sir.
If, if, if that decision is made at, at that point, if I can make a suggestion that we um aggressively put together an educational campaign on why the town wants to do that. In the past, uh, when uh items will come up for a ballot measure, we, we have done that after the fact rather than before. And uh, the misinformation flow is, is too big to attack after the fact. So if we could get the information out there early and accurate in a multimedia way. Would be very, very beneficial rather than playing catch up after the mound of misinformation.
Yeah, I, I just, did you have something?
Well, I was gonna say that the, yeah, these are, these would be great planning tools. So as long as um council lets us know that it continues to be a priority, we'll go ahead and put plans together like he's talking about. Making sure that, you know, we have the right education out there. Just putting plans together in place, hiring a consultant if we need to, all those kind of things. And we would, if it's still a priority, we'll continue to focus on it.
And I would just curious where you get water, water companies?
Where you get water?
Water.
I think it was water slash water company, so buying water and maybe looking at water companies.
Water, water.
Or water paper?
Water, waters, weather, weather.
If I could maybe add in on that, there's also uh, you know, always looking at the water importation and, and the water needs and water resources, I think is where that comes in.
And I, I don't argue with you, but I think water importation is a dream up here. And this is something that's more attainable.
Especially when you look at the dollar amounts for budgets.
Well, that's all we can, you know, unless we got some sugar daddy that's gonna give us some money to do it.
So the other way to skin this cat is also to approach the state legislature and get the law changed. That would be probably the best way. And Mark Reader, our financial advisor, I know he said that there's another community in the state that's in a similar situation. So they have been working it, but it's just, you know, getting with the Karen fans of the world and stuff and getting some legislation changed. I mean, you hit it from both sides.
Yeah.
I have no problem going to a ballot. To me, that includes the, that includes the town. So, and if they, if the majority say no, well, that's the way it is. So.
Yeah, I have some things just to piggyback off of Matt. It's like a little hard to agree, but also, want to start making improvements on the road, looks like it's gonna do to the community. It's gonna create positivity because they've been asking for something for a long time. I don't know if they'll do it now. That's gonna start happening. That's gonna be more of a yes, but automatically, whereas before it was automatically no, no matter what.
And plus, you know, buying a water company really doesn't cost the citizens. It's not costing any additional funds like the road, you know, they must do so.
Self-sustaining.
Yeah, that's where the information comes in and just as long as the town sticks to facts and doesn't advocate one position or the other, they can put information out.
Well, we already talked about moving this funding, haven't we?
There's a couple potholes out there.
One or two. Old Home Manor Industrial Park, that's coming up tonight. Infrastructure and town utilities. Which we kinda just talked about, didn't we? That last one is a.
I don't know how that applies to budget.
Applies to economic development. Do we, you know, do we make that a priority? Do we throw some funding at, you know, extra campaigning? Extra, you know, uh, website improvements, those kinds of things that can be done that um props up your economic, economic development department to try to further, you know, attract business or.
Well, I just don't know how you do one with the other. Are you gonna bring in, you see what I'm saying, maintaining the rural environment?
Cows, pigs and chickens.
And then bring in businesses, you know, you're changing it.
More developed, smaller lots of lands clustered open. People are against that, but if you're gonna grow and grow and grow, and you don't do that, you're gonna have urban sprawl and then you're losing open land.
Which is why people can't afford to split lots.
And the general plan again, we'll go into that. What did you say, Annie?
Nothing.
Oh.
Nothing I would say in my mind.
Yeah, the general plan and the input from the community and all that will help us guide that.
Where are we at with the softball fields at Old Home Manor? That's a budget item. Who wants to speak on it? And we talking about it tonight? No? Okay, so where are we at with the softball fields?
No. Well, we did have community service workers go out and start cleaning it up and did do some work out there. I think you, we have some pictures of that.
Makes a great dog park.
And so, actually, no. But the idea was to turn this, allow dogs on the smaller field out there. My direction to staff so far has get out there and, and get it cleaned up and smoothed out, get the fields graded. So that it looks like one that we care. And then I've talked to the utilities department and they're gonna basically go over and help mow the area around it, sort of square off the entire area. We wanna, roads is talked about coming in, grading that middle road in. I know the trees have been cleaned up. They've got those fixed. So it's a work in process as of right now. And the idea is just to get it cleaned up enough that it looks like we care. We're not gonna recommend coming in and putting a couple hundred thousand in to resaw the fields and redo the sprinkler systems and stuff like that. But it is um good enough that some of the ball, some of the, we need more practice fields, as you know. And some of the kids can go out there, we'll keep it smooth enough that they can go out and practice, especially on the big field. And then let the, let people, you know, sign it to not let dogs on the big field, but have a uh the dog station and let the dogs on the smaller field out there. So that's sort of the direction we're heading right now.
Scott?
It's a lot of focus on dogs in our budget.
Yeah.
That's my, one of my biggest complaints is in community services. I can't tell you how many phone calls and uh emails I get uh per year on do something with that dog park. If you go out there and create that. But as far as the uh the Old Home Manor fields, Joe's spot on in that we uh previously we were directed by the previous town manager, um, just to hold tight, sit and let's see what Old Home Manor's, what direction Old Home Manor's gonna go. Because of that, we didn't know for sure if mayor and council, if this thing of an Old Home Manor and the development, if we wanted to do something with that, with that land there. Did we wanna develop that or use it for something else? So we were instructed just to sit and wait and don't do it. The other thing is, is those fields, it's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to get those fields back up. And at that, we were told, at, at that time, it's not good use of to do that. You know, just sit and wait and see what direction the Old Home Manor master plan would be. In the meantime, as a first, if people going out there, we have to clean it up. Because if someone wants to uh invest money in there, we've gotta clean it up and make it um, you know, viable, visible that, like you said, we care. So that's what we're doing right now is trying to get that whole area cleaned up and we've been doing that.
Yeah, we've met, we've met roads, utilities, we all got together and we talked about it. So we're, we're trying to get it as soon as we have available time.
I just have something to say on that. Um, for sure, because when I take people and I tour them around there, I cringe every time I drive by there. Um, but in addition to that, if you do an economic impact analysis on that with one softball tournament, so let's say there's eight hundred people coming to town. That's two point four people per vehicle, per vehicle, two hundred fifty dollars a day in one day. So if you do the math, it'll pay back itself if you can get, how many times do I get asked, when's this softball team gonna be created in town? I have no people that already wanna do it. Everybody has to go to Prescott for all of that. So you've gotta take into account, I guess, ROI. Especially with the tourism's upcoming, how many people tournaments bring into town? In addition, how much our little league is growing? A hundred new players last year? They had to do another build. That's only gonna go up because families are living here now. So I've even encouraged Robert, short, um, Lily president to apply for the Diamondbacks grant to get those builds.
So I wanna add onto that also too is one of the things we did uh last year. And I don't, if you all saw on the corner there, Perkinsville, we totally redid and did field five. And uh, that was again for the little leagues. And so we really a- actually added fields last year, you know, irrigated, grass, electrical.
Fix the electrical.
So that takes a little bit of that off there. Um, really, the Old Home Manor thing and those fields out there. We, you could go a lot of different directions, but it's up to mayor and council as to how they want to develop that out there. Do you want baseball fields out there or do you wanna light another field at the community center? Which expands that out there, you know? We, you did that three years ago at a cost of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And uh, let a field, we have one more field to light. Okay? So that's, that's an option, but it just as far as Old Home Manor, I think at this point, um, Mr. Duffy's correct. We've gotta get it cleaned up and really to see what direction he would like us to go.
Which we should know more about tonight after our study session.
Under financing money, out of town money that comes to town for an event, spends its money here is good money because we don't have to maintain them day to day, week to week, month to month. I think that's good, nice, clean money.
I think uh focusing our resources on the, our awesome park that we have here versus Old Home Manor. When we bring a tournament like the Wade Parker Tournament, when they throw that on it, it brings, it brings in a ton of people. A lot. Everybody goes at the, like Maggie said, the ROI and it's great. So if we have uh people from the staff that used to throw on softball tournaments or softball league, I don't know if that lost money or made money years ago. So if you have something like that, that also brought players out from Prescott Valley, Prescott.
May I suggest with that, if we've got a wonderful community center there, okay? And the usage of the fields can be expanded if you would like to, somewhere down the line, light that, light that other field.
Oh, yeah.
Now you've got a whole complex lit and it can go from, you know, morning until night, non-stop.
Right.
And use multiple, the multiple fields, plus you've got concession stands. I mean, we've got a nice community centered park with five fields, six.
And those lights are, those lights are monitored by a third party, right?
We have.
Keys.
Timers.
Yeah, we have timers and then we can do it by our, our phones. So.
Technology.
Anyway, that's just, yes, that, that's one thing, but we've got that wonderful facility right there in community center park that we could expand the, I guess, the usage of the field by lighting it, uh, lighting another field down the road.
Yeah, Prescott Valley and Prescott are the only, you know, we're the only town that doesn't have any leagues or anything happening. I think we got enough people here.
We have the facilities.
Yeah, the, we definitely, our facility is better than Prescott Valley.
Mm-hmm.
A lot better.
Except they have turf.
Prescott Valley, their mountain view park. It's great.
I'm thinking. I'm thinking the soccer field.
Yeah, so I mean, our facility is nicer, the whole parking structure, everything is nice, we went on the skate park, but it doesn't matter. I mean, people want the softball players in, there's guys who spend a lot of money, and they'll travel from the valley.
I'd just bring up one other thing, it's not really this year or anything else, but something that, you know, Joe, we're very well aware of, the fastest growing sport in the nation right now is pickleball. Okay, you saw what Prescott Valley has done over there next to that whole complex. And I think that in the years to come, not this year, but we need to think about a a dedicated pickleball facility. That's all I have to say, because that's another request, down the line. Okay, now we're getting really ahead of ourselves, but we are looking to the future, just like our local system.
We've got the room to do it. I think this, this council has for several years now, recognized the quality of life issues, that it's not all about, you know, just, you know, trying to develop Old Home Manor into a business park or, you know, roads and streets. But we do recognize that those quality of life issues like the park, the pickleball, that those are things that actually make the community more of a, a community, and not just a place to lay your head at night. And this council, and I'm hearing from some of the new members, it sounds like we're still on board with that. So as you become aware of these, the pickleball thing, you know, bring it to us. And then we, I know that, I'm pretty sure that we're gonna commit a certain amount of our budget towards those items. Let's take, let's take five minutes.
Pickleball's a sport. 10 minutes.
Okay, 10 minutes.
Hey, cheerleading's a lot of work. I don't know. I don't know pickleball. I don't know pickleball.
You will.
Do we need cheerleaders for pickleball?
Are there competitions? Are there competitions though?
These people have got uniforms and all this other crap.
Yeah, it's all, you know, it's all stuff.
I understand those people. I understand. I am one of them.
I told Lynn I said that.
Are our mics on?
Yes.
No.
I don't know that.
We're not broadcasting yet?
Yes.
Now we are.
A concerned citizen is wondering why it takes a year for impact fee study.
Sorry.
You ready? All right, we're gonna let Cindy do us a recap and then bring up any other new issues we need to discuss.
Okay. All right, I tried to take some notes and just to kind of summarize what I've heard today. First off, we talked about, you talked about using additional CARES Act funding or additional fund balance, however we make that work for a down payment on, using some of that for down payment on the police building if it's possible. So we'll be sure and look at that. Roadwork seemed to be a priority as well for that. Planning for the future came up a lot and that was with our general plans as the first priority. After that, master planning and asset managed, asset management to follow that appropriately. We also heard about code enforcement being an important priority for next year. Talked about water infrastructure and looking at purchasing, again, looking at the purchasing of water companies. And then also, we talked about the, having the 50th year celebration this year along with a 4th of July event. So those were the major things I have on my notes. If I missed anything, please let me know and any other discussion.
Okay, that's where we are. Eric, is there anything that you would like to consider? That we haven't talked about?
No, I don't have anything right now.
Nothing? Other than the ballparks, maybe?
Ballparks, lots of fireworks and a real patriotic year.
So maybe we summarize that into a quality of life emphasis with ballparks recreation.
Pickleball.
50th year celebration for the July event.
Seventeen seventy-six.
Seventeen seventy-six, though?
The impact fee study gonna start in April? Is that what I understood?
That's correct.
That's very important. Other than that, I'm gonna hit you about the dog park, but I got people coming in to see you and you probably won't like them, but they're coming in anyway, so.
That's okay, that can roll into quality of life.
Amy? I do this as a help?
Thank you.
Cory?
The, would like to get a little bit more dialed in on the, the old home manner plan as far as just more amongst, a consensus amongst the council as far as to, to give Maggie more direction on what our vision of, as the council is out there.
And then I agree with Tom on the dog park and looking around, what, what I'm hearing is that the, the dogs get on the, there's a hard surface, it's hot when, when it's hundred, hundred and ten here, it's hot, it's hot on their dogs or their feet, there's no shade, so, you know, just some basic stuff for the dog park. And then events, bringing people, again, repeat myself, that bring people to town to spend their money in our town and then go home.
Cindy, did you want any of your staff to bring up anything?
Um, I think this is really for you, you all today. Unless there's specifics that, that you have questions for them.
I have one, and this is, we, how does our sales tax at this point compare to the surrounding communities? And where, just kind of that, that topic.
Okay.
May I interject on that? So we sit on, we have meetings every other week with all the counties, so that's in the counterparts of the communities across the county. They all are seeing the same thing about twenty-three to twenty-five percent increase here over your sales tax.
As far as revenues, no, I'm, I'm looking at more from a competitive standpoint. And whether that's really a factor or not with us here.
You mean like our sales tax rate?
Yes.
Yeah, I can give you the rates, look at these splits, but do you want me to look at maybe what they've been budgeting and I probably won't have what they currently are collecting.
What, what they're charging for sales tax compared to what we're charging for sales tax.
I can print that out before you go tonight. I'll share it with all the council. I'll send you an email.
Okay, okay. And then that would then go into economic development discussion once we see where that is. Because when you start looking at big ticket items, say a car lot, yeah, that a half a percent is, is significant when you're talking big ticket items.
And that's been a complaint with some of the business owners in town too, because they're competing against Prescott and they're, you know, already had a half a percent, you know, comes out of their pocket versus, you have to trim off the top to, to match, so.
I'll throw a little schedule together and send it to Cindy and have her distribute it to you guys.
For me, I think of getting staff back up to ease up everybody's positions a little bit. Staff, hiring staff back to help to assist with, you know, what we got going.
Yeah, we have a lot of staffing requests, so.
That, you know, and maybe could expedite where things could happen a little quicker, you know, because there is a lag, you know, I hear complaints about your guys' building because it takes a while to get things done. You know, and so I don't know if staff is the answer there or if it's computers or if it's, I don't know what it is. I'm sorry.
Or expectations as well, making sure we're clear on providing realistic expectations when they come in. Communication, I guess, would be a better word.
Okay, yeah, and this is coming from the public side, you know, they're saying, oh my God, it took forever, you know, it's like, and I, and I do hear that, so. I'm sorry.
You can't lobby council meeting.
But, I mean, that is a good thing to bring up because whether it's money that it takes or whatever focus it is, that, that's still an area, area we can focus whether that takes money or not. If that's something important to you.
I, I would like to, you know, figure it out. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to piggyback on that, like a month for a business license. When it was like a two-week review period, there is a definite lag there somewhere.
Yeah, and it's, and those, those poor girls are, they're working hard up front, they're always got their head down. So maybe, you know, I don't know if it's, like I said, if it's a systems or.
There was a system change is what actually caused that, wasn't it?
Part of the problem is the change from citizen served to I-words. But the other issue is staff.
Can I make a comment real quick, just from a recruitment perspective? So we are gonna, going to bring on, we are actively bringing on a recruitment module, so we can become more efficient in our recruitment when it's approved and when it's needed for turnover. But what concerns me is when we bring these people on, I mean, there's indirect effects of, you know, computers and phones and things like that, but also space, we lack in space.
We're working, we're working on that, aren't we, Chief? Yeah.
Well, that does bring up something that Frank has talked about, once that building's built, then we'll have to come up with a plan to figure out what we're gonna do with those other buildings and.
That's a facilities issue that's under.
Sure, the dump truck's empty and it's got a park on it. Sunny days, rainy days, you know, so.
Good with that. It doesn't rain that often.
Is there anything else we need to discuss? Chief, I gotta mention, this has been the quietest you've ever been in a meeting.
I'm gonna be very quiet till I first shovel dirt first.
Yeah, he's not spending nothing.
But did we want to talk about old home manners more recently?
If that's, if this is.
I mean, if it's still gonna be a priority for us, you know, something we want staff to continue to work at, which I'm assuming you do, but.
I would say that the, we're, okay, that's on for tonight.
Talk about that now or tonight?
Well, we, I don't even talk about the specifics, but just in general, if it's still, you know, a priority for the council.
We.
You wanna go?
Go ahead, let's see what you got.
I personally got a lot of feedback from people about spending money on old home manner and nothing ever happens after. So we got the grant two years ago, Joe, three?
Three.
Three years ago, and we made, we made decisions and then again, nothing was happening. So my beef was until we get going, what we've got money for and is on the table, there's no need in doing more. And, and I think, and then I got echoed from the rest of the council at that time that they kind of agreed, it's like, come on, you know, let's go, let's do stuff. So that's the gist of it. You go.
Mine was more of.
Personal?
No, establishing what the, what the guidelines are of what we're trying to attract out there. And what kind of either leasing arrangements, dollars and cents. Yeah.
That's tonight.
Yeah, and that is tonight, yeah. So we will just have more discussion. But, I, I really agree that what's happened in the past hasn't worked, so.
The what?
What's happened in the past hasn't worked for us so far, but, you know, it's still a great asset.
Yeah, possibly review what the vision is out there, you know, and, and not so much the RV portion, but more of the, of the, what's gonna go in on the bottom end.
I would say it's still very much a priority for myself on the rec side, and also we've spent a lot of money to not do anything with it. Just speaking for myself.
I think it's a prime area. If we just let it slide, we're missing, we need to push, push, push and push out there to get whatever we can. You know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I mean, not gonna be the first time we failed at something.
Thanks for your positive.
At least for me. That's personally speaking only, not.
You got anything here?
No comment.
No, that doesn't work.
No, I, I think, yeah, the old home matters, a lot of work could be done there, but I mean, is it on a private level or is it gonna be on a?
Yeah, I think that's a world of fun, so.
Yeah, a lot of work needs to be done, a great area. Let's move forward with it.
You have anything on that? Okay, we could just put ball fields from one end to the other. Pickleball?
Softball, football. Mudder grinder.
We can water with, with fluid water.
You can, we can treat it good enough.
We're making Class A water. You can water, you can do a golf course with Class B, B+.
One other thing, one other thing, one thing, is the mudder and the, and all that stuff is in the budget, grinder?
And the mud.
And the mud. Is that still?
We're back. No, they're back.
They're back?
Almost got away.
Really?
They are still here.
So we're, we're, we're in talks with them right now, let's just say that.
Okay, for the mudder or the grinder?
The grinder.
Okay, what about the mudder?
We need to talk about that.
Okay.
Well, the, correct me if I'm wrong, the grinder is an outside event.
Right.
The mudder was all.
Town.
Town.
Yeah.
Oh, with prep, huh? With prep.
Parks Recreation, blah blah. Yeah, but it's, but I mean, it's, it's not like an outside contractor coming in, so it's kind of.
Right.
To council to say, yeah.
Why did we kill it?
But that's something we will come back to you with as part of the budget.
Okay. Yes, sir.
No, I just, with the mudder and grinders, that, that's something that's with the grinder, that's gonna come back and by the way, we're discussing with it. Mud run, we need to do a little more research as far as the cost of what it costs to town.
I got you, man.
Mr. Dumpy will fill you in on that when it gets together. Because it's a lot. Well, along with that, in the past, we have not aggressively gone after sponsorship for the mudder. We lost out on a lot of opportunities for sponsorship to cover a lot of that cost. And I fielded, we're just correct. We have a lot of people interested in spending money on that.
Yeah.
That it was not taken advantage of.
And again, when you commit, when you consider events, you don't just consider what they cost, you consider that the return that they bring with our tourism program, bringing people into town, getting people to know, you know, you know, the first year it might cost this much money, but if you keep it up. And I don't know the specifics of each event, so I can't speak to that, but.
I would like, please, if we could, to come back to that, we need to, we need to talk to you and with the budget director, and there's some things you need to know.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so that'll all come back, that'll come through as part of the budget process, but you will have input on it.
Here's one thing I need to know, how much should we put in permanent structures that are out there right now? Yeah, the mudder, we put permanent.
Well, yeah, the, the obstacle course of that equipment stuff out there, I don't have that statistics on me right now, I have my idea.
Fair enough.
It's more of labor, it was more labor, the hours and hours of labor that staff put out there, incredible, and even lots of overtime to put all that out there.
It was greatly enjoyed by the community.
And we have the opportunity to take advantage of a few local groups who will supply dozens and dozens of volunteers. Mr. Miller actually recorded a short video thanking one of those groups today. He wasn't aware of it, but yeah. With, with, with advanced planning, there are a lot of opportunities to get volunteers to come out and do those type of events. If we aggressively go after those, we can, and, yeah.
Well, the chambers, they usually have a volunteer list there as well that they're supposed to maintain. So I think that a lot of people in this community that's very supportive of each other and of events or anything that's gonna bring people in, I think you're gonna find, you're gonna get a lot of volunteers, but.
And there's sponsors that are interested in these events.
Yes, sir. Did you have something?
Was the town involved in Man Horse at all?
Uh, not that I remember.
Was that all County and Jeep Posse and all those guys doing things?
All right, again, we'll put that down with the quality of life.
Okay.
Maggie's budget just went up.
Okay, now we've done done then? Is that what you're saying?
The, I, I'm gonna have, do one more on, on roads and streets as we're thinking about projects as far as which are, for the most part, roads and streets are maintenance and, and keeping things up to date. We do have a couple items that would be major for north realignment, which would be a major access to the old home manner. And it, because right, right now, to develop old home manner, it's, we don't have real good access, and it would be, you know, commercial access, trucks. Perkinsville would, would suffer, Perkinsville from the time you Jerome Junction out is, is decaying quite quickly. And then the realignment of four north, which. Uh, and then the realignment of four north, which we've all been out to Mexican food place and the jogs, that would be one of those major, what's the right word for it?
Expansion or?
Yeah, big project.
There's also a maintenance component to that because that road is seeing serious maintenance needs as well, so. Along with every other road in town.
Right.
Especially ones that go off for north.
Right.
I, it did just for, you know, maybe, maybe something that, to come back with us.
But it's more than just a maintenance component.
As much as I, I agree with Eric, as far as it would really be nice to just put a big chunk down, if not the whole thing for the police department. There might be some other areas that this, it's, it's easy to justify to the public our need for a new police department. And the financing of it. It might be a pretty difficult sell to do a, a four north or something of that sort, so.
We could bring you a couple options then.
Couple car shows are coming in the next few weeks here.
So is this.
He's tickled.
No. I don't believe you. See, when you got that follow, it's like, yeah, but I'm not gonna say it now. What was it?
No, I'm, I'm okay right now.
I'd just be piggybacking off Cory on roads and streets, that four north, if, if we expect to do anything, it what's that called, that thing?
Old Hope Manor.
That's it, I just forgot it. If we expect to do anything that we're gonna have to do for north to get in, since, and people in and out.
Alternative ingress.
It was slated to be the major, yes.
Right, I was just gonna say that four north was always intended to eventually be the main commercial access.
That road's junk anyway, needs fixed, you know.
Correct.
Yeah.
I am solid, I'm good.
I believe I'm done.
Holy crap. You got anything else? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn and then what's the plan?
Well, we have dinner coming at
Five?
Four. So you can either eat now or come back at five, if you wanna take a break and run an errand or anything like that, and we're actually gonna reconvene work session, I mean, have the work session at six.
Okay, so dinner's here at four?
It will be here at four, but you can eat anytime before, between four and six.
I'm gonna take a vote to see if we wanna eat at four or four at five o'clock, so ha, ha, ha.
Where's that gavel at?
What do you guys wanna eat?
Can we just start a study session or? We cannot.
You have way too many damn rules.
Can we either have, show a movie or? Till six?
We don't have Netflix.
Well, it's not really worth leaving and coming back.
No, I mean, anyone can eat at any time, if they wanna eat now or they can eat at five or they, you know.
Okay, we're gonna stay in adjourned.
All right.
Done motion, we adjourn.
You don't know the food that we have. What kind of food? Sandwiches? Glad they made it. Yeah, I'm glad they're staying, sticking it out.